Did you hear it? I'm not hearing anything. Yeah, I'm not hearing it above the speakers here. No, not that I know. Test, test. Sounds like my life.
We don't usually do this.
I.
He goes in.
That's what they do.
Probably is not early. But they just. Yeah. And that's just. I'm not going to say.
Yeah, I'm right.
Just test.
Just go with this.
Yeah, well, yeah.
We're walking out. It's just a little bit of reason.
Okay, everybody, I think we're back and good to go. Getting a thumbs up if you could all please sit down and. Excuse me, everybody. If we could all please be quiet, we're going to get back to the meeting. Good? Amber recording again? Okay. Mr. Fiorillo, you want to pick up where you left off, please?
Back again, let's see. David Fiorillo. Forty-five Hamilton Drive. I think we're good this time. All right, as the Chair of the Portsmouth Parks and Recreation Committee, I'm here to express my deep concern and disappointment regarding the recent agenda that proposed to rescind or. Whatever, to rescind the vote for disc golf at Glen Park. To many of us who have dedicated countless volunteer hours in this town. It feels as if the democratic process is being undermined. The effort to revisit the vote appears to respond. To a small group of opponents rather than a broader community. Which, much of which have expressed strong support for the, for the course and for expanding recreational opportunities here in Portsmouth. Residents deserve consistency, predictability, and respect for the process that guides this town's decisions. I'm also compelled to address what has become a growing problem. Public statements made by this council member, by council members during official meetings. That have allowed. That have alluded to the, to the concern that the Parks and Recreation Committee. Has not done their due diligence around this topic. We met as a committee and discussed this at six meetings over the course of nine months. Charlene was there for all of them. If you, if there was information that we did not consider that you felt was necessary to have for you to make your decision. You should have either asked us. For research on your behalf or do the research yourself. You are the voting authority here and it's, it's your job to do your due diligence. We are an advisory group. Committee, sorry, we are an advisory committee. There to advise not to decide. That is your job. The Parks and Rec Committee is not just me, there are, there are six other residents who have spent countless months and years on, on the committee volunteering to make this town better. We are also your constituents. We show up, we put in the work, and we do so because we care about Portsmouth. It is discouraging to have our work publicly dismissed or portrayed in a negative light by this council, especially. When we have acted transparently and within our responsibilities, our committee deserves better from this council. Now, as Chair, I have personally been targeted. For complaints and actions that appear to have stemmed from opposition to the Disc Golf Project rather than from genuine concern for procedure. An ethics complaint. Because meeting minutes were not submitted on time. By the person who notably has never once came to a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting. Never once. It is difficult to reconcile such complaints with the idea that they are rooted in the interest in process, participation, or good governance. How can one claim the process was flawed when one never took part of the process at all? And I also point that at you, Mary, you've never once come to a meeting. I know, but.
Don't make, don't make any.
I'm not trying to, but my name is in her smear campaign, which is on, on, you know, on the council agenda, so. I feel like I have to address Mary.
It was put together by a citizen.
And she approved it, so shame on her. Shame on you then. Mary, in your slide, and I'm just going to refer to that.
Mr. President, this is ridiculous.
It's not ridiculous, Mr. Reese. It's not.
Public information that was put forth by a counselor. To refute a vote that this council mistakenly took. To rescind a vote of, of this council.
This isn't a personal critique of people.
No, it's a response to an agenda item that was put forth by a counselor.
Did, did Ms. McDowell do the research and, I mean, my name is in there.
Dave, we're not going to go so far because we have other business to get to.
But I just need to point out that if this was a, a presentation by a resident. And you allowed it without saying, hey, we should take that out, I mean, that's, that's on you. Mary, in your slide. That. That show that the comment has filed, hasn't been filed in minutes in a timely manner, but you don't hold the same standard for any of the committees in this town as well. For example, the Solid Waste Committee has unfilled minutes from this year. But you're, yet you're complaining about our committee. The Conservation Committee has minutes not filed within the thirty-five day threshold that you also put in your, in your presentation. The Dog Park has no files, minutes filed this year. Where's the process? On that. In addition. A member of the Preserve the Glen Group opposed, opposed, opposing the course filed an opera. Request targeting me personally, seemingly searching for evidence of wrongdoing where there is none. It is disheartening that efforts to bring something positive to this community without seeking personal benefit are met with suspicion rather than appreciation. Contributing to the town is not a scheme, it is the, it is what responsible, engaged residents do. Given the public conflict. The, the disparaging comments and the attempt, and the attempt to discredit volunteers, this moment reflects poorly on Portsmouth. The way this issue has unfolded has made our town appear fractured and unprofessional. We risk becoming, in the eyes of other municipalities, the example of how not to treat volunteers, committees, or established democratic votes. I'm, I'm just going to skip, no, I'll do it. Last thing. We always hear about the process, we always hear about the process, but you yourself have not upheld the process that you so highly speak of. Our committee met and discussed a potential disc golf course. Our committee voted to approve and brought forward to the council for a vote. The council voted in favor for the course. The council voted to have an MOA slash MOU drafted. For your review and approval. Our committee met last week to work on the MOA slash MOU. And you want to rescind the vote before the process is finished. Stand by your own actions and let the process play out. I urge this council strongly to uphold the previous vote, honor the decision that was made, respect the process that was followed. Allow the two-year trial period for the disc golf course to proceed. Show Portsmouth residents and every other community watching that this town can stand by its own decision and that its values, it values the people who work to improve it. I am disappointed and I am frustrated and I am deeply concerned about the direction that this town council is going. But it is not too late, which it is, I guess, but uphold the vote, let the two-year trial continue and stop undermining the process that defines good governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. We're going to try Mr. Pappas again. We're going to keep our fingers crossed.
Can you hear me now by any chance?
Yes, we can, Steve. Thank you for your patience.
How about that? I thank you for your patience. Keith, I'm going to, Mr. Hamilton, I'll direct you, direct my. My response to you directly. Because I know you're in a tough position. I mean, you are in a really, really tough position to be sitting there tonight. And, you know, as someone who sat in that seat. Oh, for about six years, twelve years on the council, I know it's a tough job. It's a really tough job. But the best times I remember is when people would come up to me after a meeting. And they would say, Steve, I totally disagree with you. But. I really like the way you explain yourself and I know where you're coming from. To listen to what went on tonight and to hear somebody who changed their vote, not give one reason why they changed their vote, because you know why they didn't? Because they sat there while a solicitor fed the pavlum to four people, a bunch of hooey. So that they could suck it up and come up with this decision that they made. Prior to this meeting. I sat with a bunch of different solicitors, they were all great. I cannot believe that this solicitor will speak out of turn when you don't talk to him. And when you don't ask him questions, that is not his job. It's embarrassing to be a former member of this council, I wish you the best of luck. I will be filing a FOIA. Because I want to see the emails between these four council people and your solicitor. Thank you.
Mr. President. Point of order. I'd like to make a motion to close debate at this point. If I could get a second, please?
Second.
Unfortunately, it's a point of order and. We have to take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes four to three, which closes debate on this item. However, since the way things have played out tonight, obviously, we can bring back a motion anytime you want to have an agenda item to talk about anything. No.
Can't talk now, though?
No. Put it on the next agenda or January.
So next meeting I come back up, are we still going to go over the MOU, MOA? Thank you, hon. Are we? Okay, thank you.
Please be respectful to each other. Going on to new business number one. I give everybody a couple of minutes to get out if you would like. Right back at you, my friend. I know where it's coming from. Or going to. Happy Thanksgiving. All right. New business number one, request a letter from, on town letterhead given municipal approval for installation of a Flock safety camera. Captain Albom from the. Rhode Island State Police. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, council people. Thank you. All right. Regarding Flock safety cameras, the Rhode Island State Police are committed to enhancing public safety, eliminating crime. And highway security across multiple jurisdictions throughout the state and the nation. Automatic license plate recognition cameras have, and will continue to help enable the ability to support modern policing through data-driven. Resource optimized solutions. Flock safety cameras provide automated vehicle recognition, real-time alerts, and advanced analytics. These capabilities significantly, excuse me, aid law enforcement in responding to active threats such as mass shootings and the likes of that. Investigating crimes and maintaining situational awareness. Especially critical given the staffing challenges faced by many agencies nationwide. With persistent staffing shortages, these cameras help alleviate the need for manpower and man-hours and maximize investigative efficiency. They also provide real-time alerts such as amber alerts for missing children, silver alerts for missing elderly folks, and purple alerts for adults with mental and cognitive disabilities. Through the NCIC and National Center for Missing and Exploited Children and other customized hot lists. Flock safety cameras will only maximize the ability to collaborate across jurisdictions and respond swiftly to emerging threats. These cameras offer a vital enhancement to our public safety infrastructure, improving. And investigative outcomes. Their deployment aligns with both technological advancement and operational efficiency while respecting civil liberties through robust privacy protocols. Currently in the state of Rhode Island, Flock technology is utilized by at least fourteen municipalities, five commercial properties, two Department of Housing and Urban Development communities, one neighborhood association, one town school district, and one college campus of Rhode Island College. Ethically, there are no facial recognition, no speed tracking, and no undiscerning evidence gathered. Flock safety cameras have no public IP and therefore are not addressable remotely to access footage. All data collection points are equipped with secure communication protocols to protect data and transit from interception and tampering. All data is encrypted using industry-standard algorithms before being transmitted to the servers. In addition to being certified by the FBI's Criminal Justice Information Services, they are compliant with the National Defense Authorization Act, the Higher Education Community Vendor Assessment Tool, HIPAA, and Family Education Rights. They are also aligned with the security protocols established by the National Institute of Standards and Technology, cybersecurity, as well as the Cloud Security Alliance's framework. Flock cameras also aid in exonerating suspects, not just convicting suspects. I assure you that through the use of Flock cameras, the goal of law enforcement is not, is to not jump to immediate conclusions. However, these cameras do provide a great investigative lead that can fill many gaps within an investigation. I'm not going to waste, you've had a long night, there, there are so many testimonials of success with these cameras that are already in place and I, and I won't delve to, I won't even delve into them, but. I mean, there's, there's an inordinate amount. And presently, it's true that there are not presently any statutory safeguards or framework for the use of automated license plate readers. However, there have been several legislative proposals, but none have been passed to this date. The town of Portsmouth is not being asked to sign up with Flock as the contract will be between the Rhode Island State Police and Flock. As Flock encourages its customers to create policies and guidelines, the Rhode Island State Police will be operating on a stringent policy as well as a memorandum of understanding with other agencies who we allow them to share data with. This will include not providing any information related to immigration issues. This project will be moving forward with or without a camera being deployed in this town. However, I feel that if this request is denied, you'll be taking away a great investigative tool from its residents that will be provided at no cost. It is also the intention of the Rhode Island State Police to provide full access to our statewide camera system to members of the Portsmouth Police Department to aid them in their investigations and real-time incidents. Similarly, the Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority has transponders in place that record every time a vehicle drives over the bridge. Also, in other cities and towns, the red light and speed cameras are obtaining license plates on a regular basis. A Flock camera is not very different than utilizing a closed-circuit television camera at a business or other security cameras such as doorbell and residential cameras. The bottom line is I'm attempting to make the state of Rhode Island, Rhode Island a safer place and provide its investigators with the necessary tools to successfully do their jobs. The Rhode Island State Police is very driven on accountability. To that point, based on the projected policy and memorandum of understanding, users will be held accountable for their use of the Flock camera system as there is a documented search history. Remember this, as law enforcement tactics and technology advances, so do the criminals and their techniques. And again, I'm going to miss all the, all the testimonials, but let me draw your attention to a case I worked on personally in Portsmouth in 2013 when a thirteen-year-old girl. Was taken. From Ferry Landing Circle. Just beyond the Mount Hope Bridge at nine AM in July, 2013. Missing all day. The. The Portsmouth Police Department, the State Police of Rhode Island, the New Jersey State Police, and the FBI worked tirelessly over. The next morning, twelve forty-five. The next day. We were able to locate her with. A ton of investigative skills. A little bit of luck that, thank God, we got. And the girl was recovered in New Jersey. However, based on her statement when she was recovered, when she went over the Mount Hope Bridge with the, the evidence we had. A neighbor and a landscaper notified us that a red Chrysler with an unknown New Jersey license plate. Had taken the girl, she walked in that car and drove away. Flock cameras were in place, we would have typed in red Chrysler, unknown New Jersey license plate, and by the time that car was probably out of Rhode Island, not in Connecticut, the car was pulled over, she was returned home before a full night of searching for the girl. And that's just one testimony right here in Portsmouth that I was part of, that Flock cameras were in place would have made it a different story. And if, do you know the story? He was charged federally and brought back to Rhode Island to face his time. So. I ask that you allow us to put a camera in, there's, the state of Rhode Island is looking to place thirty-nine cameras around the state. I feel that state, town of Portsmouth should have one. The location that I'm planning on putting it and I'm, I'm open to changes with the chief or anyone in the town, Route twenty-four North over by the Cove, by Anthony Road. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. So it would be in the Cedar Cove, the Cedar Grove area, facing south, I'm assuming, catching cars going north off the island?
It would be face, correct, correct.
Any questions from Captain, Mr. Ferro?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Captain, you, you answered one of my questions about where you proposed placement. Would you be able to provide the council with the, I'm, I'm not asking you for it on the spot at all, the encryption information? I was trying to find it online, but it was, obviously, it's proprietary, so.
Right.
It's just come, better coming from you.
I can get to you, I don't have.
I'm not putting you on the spot. But my only, I would say, concern, and that's, there's no better word. Is you said that there's state legislation that's been proposed that allows for the implementation of the program. And I know that you have plans to do thirty-nine around the state. Wouldn't the installation, and I'm, I'm not saying this opposed to it, I'm actually in favor for it because I think automated enforcement tactics are very good and you gave the perfect example. Wouldn't it be a little bit more the cart before the horse when it comes to legality?
So the legislative, the legislation are, I don't know, so people. People will do legislative proposals in front of the House and the Senate, whether or not they get, so you know, right, the system, like, whether or not they get heard is on the House and the Senate.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I'm in the middle of doing a, not related to Flock cameras, I'm in the middle of my third year of legislative proposal. Sometimes it's heard, sometimes it's not, so it does take several years and it's not, what the legislative was more or less were. I don't think it was deploying the cameras, so, so to say, because there are already cameras deployed statewide, so I don't, I don't know, I don't even know personally what, I know for a fact that there were legislative proposals, I don't even know what they are.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the captain? Just blank.
Thank you so much for coming forward and talking with us on this. Is my understanding correct that? Is my understanding correct that this information is used between the Rhode Island State Police and Flock? That the residents in the town council and the police department of Portsmouth has no say in this?
So my plan is when we finalize our, our policy and our MOUs, it's to give the Portsmouth Police Department access to the cameras, all, all the cameras statewide. I mean, we're, so we are putting, we just had our first meeting last week of our onboarding. It's gonna take time. It's not something that's gonna happen overnight. So we're working on policies, MOUs, we're working on rights, and, and by the way, I didn't mention there is a thirty-day retention period if I didn't mention that. So all the information that's getting taken on the cameras, gone, completely wiped after thirty days. But you're, can you, can you say your question again?
You had stated this would be between the Rhode Island State Police and Flock?
Just the contract.
For the contract?
Just the contract.
Who owns the pictures?
The Rhode Island State Police and Flock.
Is there any say on how those pictures are used?
I mean, we're work-
Outside of Flock and the Rhode Island State Police?
Well, in hopes of, of following a stringent policy and MOU, yes. But we're, I mean, that's in the works right now.
Is Flock a private company?
Yes.
You said that these are no different than red light cameras right now that are reading license plate, or similar, the, the technology of reading?
Right. I mean, they're, it's constantly, it's constantly getting information, but it's technically, so it's, and there's, it's, it's getting the back of a vehicle and the license plate. There's no facial recognition, there's no frontal, that, that's the goal. The goal of Flock is to just capture the backs of cars. And that's all they're, they're looking for.
If it's facing south on twenty-four North?
It'd be, I misspoke, it'd be catching the southbound traffic heading north.
It would be catching.
Northbound traffic, sorry.
If you want to see the projected location.
Northbound traffic heading off-
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, actually, it's a better one.
And it would be facing south?
Can I approach it?
It would be facing north, yes.
Okay. So more facing north?
Yes.
Right.
Gotcha. Thank you for your clarification.
You're welcome.
Currently, where do we have red light cameras in this general area?
I don't even know.
The newest one is in Newport, and I think that's the only one, Hillside and-
That Middletown one?
No, those are speed cameras by the schools. The red light camera is at Maggantonomy and, not Magg, is it Maggantonomy? Alphus, thank you, and, and Hillside, which I believe is now being taken offline because it wasn't installed properly.
Speed cams can only be by schools.
Within a quarter mile.
A quarter mile to school.
Approving this, would it allow any other locations to happen?
I, I mean, we'd ask, and obviously I wouldn't just put them up. But right now, there's only one projected to go in, in this town. And just so you have an idea that, so to get more state coverage, I, my projected one is I, I'm still working with the town of Bristol. It would be, if I, if they allow me, it's gonna be on the Mount Hope, be on the other side of the Mount Hope Bridge, getting, that traffic coming into Portsmouth from the Mount Hope Bridge. And then if Warren, I have to go Warren as well, I'm looking to put one on one thirty-six at Market Street, just to get the coverage on the island.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then you had mentioned that by the use of this camera, there would be, it would help reduce, it would help alleviate manpower?
Yes.
To whom? To the police department?
Where whoever has access to it. It's presently showing like-
Are you stating that putting in a Flock camera will reduce the need for police officers here in town?
No, no, but it helps alleviate-
I didn't think so.
No, certainly not. It doesn't replace police officers. It just helps increase investigative tools and, and expedites cases.
So then, it just increases surveillance? It doesn't alleviate the need for manpower?
It doesn't, but I can tell you, we've been using it, and we have the success rate of locating vehicles involved in highway shootings. Right now, there was just a shooting up in Outoborough, and we know for a fact where, you know, where the car's been going. I can't say because it's an open case, but, so it gives you a generalized area of where the vehicle might be.
Just sharing my opinions. I don't feel that this helps the residents of Portsmouth, and that's who I was elected to represent and make decisions for. I do recognize where this is helpful on the investigative side and where it does alleviate some manpower, but as someone who works very much in technology and AI, I, and this being a private company, I don't, I do not personally feel this is good for the residents of Portsmouth. I absolutely appreciate you answering all of our questions and coming here.
Mr. Ferro, you have another question?
Miss Blank raised her hand. I was gonna go for a second.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. With the data sharing, I have seen that it's possible that data sharing is also at like Ring Cameras and other companies, like is that something that's often shared with that?
Flock?
Yeah.
Like, what is, what is the exact question? I'm not-
Like, shared outside, like with federal agents as far as private sector parties, things like that?
So right now, what's going on because of the issue with ICE and everything else, there's a lot of towns and cities that already have these cameras, and even for us to view their cameras, we're have, we have to sign off an MOU saying we will not. And again, I understand it happens. Anything can happen in, in these fields, but you're gonna be held accountable, and it's known.
Okay, and my other question is price. Does it cost Portsmouth? Do we pay for these?
State Police paying for it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And it's, it would be in place for a minimum of three years. And obviously, if you, if it went in, you voted for it, and you didn't like it, we'd take it right out.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just Councilwoman Blank's comments made me think of a question. The information, the photos, and, and this kind of goes to my encryption information as well. Where is the information stored? Is it become property of the state police, or does it become property of Flock?
It would, it would ultimately be ours, I believe, but again, we just had our first onboard meeting, which was all of the, the internal, the, the IT, the MIS, I mean, but ultimately, it would be in, in a system that we have set up. And like I said, every thirty days, it's gone if you don't-
So is that, it's, it's property of the state police, and every thirty days it becomes eliminated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just expand on that?
Absolutely.
I had looked, looked into this, prior to this coming up, and on Flock's website, they do say they own the pictures as, as well as the, um, police department's using it.
Okay.
Do you have any concerns of Flock being breached?
No.
Why?
I don't. Well, there's, there's no, even if it was breached, there's no, there's no personal data being obtained at all. It's literally like no different than me standing outside on the side of the road with a, with my phone, taking, taking video of cars going by.
Sure.
And they do have a, a very hefty insurance policies, policy, should there be, that we have on, on our agreement with them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from councilors? Mr. Katzman?
Thank you, Captain.
You're welcome. Thank you. Excuse me. Please, hang by in case there's other questions for you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Len Katzman, one sixty-two Spring Hill Road. You know how sometimes I've stood before you and said, I've done this research from like academic-published journals and like, you know, I have this stuff that I can access through a database, and here's some information? That's not this time. You can just Google this. Flock safety holds itself out to be exactly as presented, and I sat where you are when Chief Peters, a person I respect and trust completely, stood here and asked about installing a Flock safety camera at the Mount Hope Bridge. I believe it was for suicide prevention? And the council voted to approve that because who's, who, who's not in favor of, of that, of supporting suicide prevention? Then it was published in, I think, Portsmouth Times, and the matter came, we brought, there was so much opposition, we brought it back to the council. This room was filled with people who were concerned about safety and privacy and the surveillance, expansion of the surveillance state. I sent you all an email. I hit send about ten minutes of seven, so you may not have seen it yet. There's just a couple of links in there, but I assure you, if you, if you Google, you know, do an internet search for Flock camera security breach, or Flock camera misuse, that, that sort of search, you will find a lot of information. The links I gave you specifically were to a, an, two articles, two items. One was an article about the misuse of the system by Texas police who used the eighty-eight thousand camera network nationwide to track a Texas resident who went out of state to seek legally an abortion, that they're legally entitled to, but then wanted to prosecute that person when they came back, and they were trying to make a case that they did what they did by using Flock camera data. The other link I sent to you had to, has to do with the security of the cameras themselves and how easily hacked they were. It, watch that forty-five-minute video. It's, it was shocking. They were prepared to bring in, you know, this security IT audit team to do professional, like what those guys do. It took them about five minutes to find out, huh, this is default Android version eight, by the way, which is not secure. It goes on and on and on. It was very easy for them to hack it. Once hacked, they could actually alter data in it, so you want to talk about entering evidence in, in court from these cameras? You're gonna trust it if it can be altered? So I urge you to please not approve this, and at least, at a minimum, if you're inclined to approve it, at least pause and take some time to, to, to do the basic internet searching around and reading about communities that have done this.
Mr. Katzman, what was the council's action on their previous vote? Because they had approved it, and it was on the bridge, and then they-
I don't remember the actual, I don't remember the, whether it was a motion to rescind or reconsider. I don't remember the posture of it, parliamentary posture.
But it was voted to remove it after they approved it?
We voted to undo our approval, yes. It, it may have been our, so it hadn't fully gone into effect yet because it was something along the lines of, and people I'm sure will correct me if I'm misremembering, it was dependent on Bristol also agreeing, because it was on the bridge and it was gonna be a something to do with Bristol needed to agree as well. And so because it was still pending, nothing had happened yet.
But it had been approved.
By this council.
By the council.
Yeah.
And they rescinded it.
Like I said-
I just wondered how that happened.
Yes, I don't remember if it was a motion to rescind or reconsider or what have you, but it was at the immediate following meeting by me, someone who was on the prevailing side. So posturally, there was no question. So yeah.
Yeah, I did look that up.
At the urging, by the way, it was at the urging of, of, of overwhelming voices of constituents who, who contacted me and I'm sure other members of the council at the time saying-
I know the feeling of the fans getting in touch with the right-
That's happened a lot lately. Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I did look it up as well and did some research, and it said that the town council ended up voting to rescind their prior support, so.
Thank you, yeah. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that, that I'm, I'm sure the information presented was earnestly brought forth before you. I don't think there's any nefarious purpose in what you're doing, but I don't trust Flock Safety Corporation. They're a startup company, they're less than ten years old, but they have billions of dollars. They're very well-funded. And as a private startup company, their goal is to build out as valuable a network of stuff as they can and then go public or have it acquired. So that's, that's their goal. Their goal is not your safety. Their goal is to make money. These are venture capitalists, and they're trying to make money. And there's nothing wrong with that, but just understand that that's what this company is. Not all camera companies are like Flock. I would not trust Flock at all. Their, their product is easily hacked and, and is subject to misuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katzman. Representative McGaw, I'm gonna give you preference over the chief. Ladies first.
Thank you so much. Michelle McGaw, fifty-eight, Camaro Drive, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to add that there has also been legislation heard at the General Assembly to put restrictions on some of these cameras. I wanted to share with the council that I hear repeatedly, year after year, from my constituents who have significant concerns about privacy information around this type of system. So I, I think that it's important to know that these are emails that I get on an annual basis from people who live in this community who have the concerns, and we recognize that we had that concern a few years ago with the bridge. I also wanna to point out that while the representative from Flock stated that it's strictly a license plate reader, we also know that technology is rapidly changing. We have AI, we have facial recognition. There are a lot of sources that can incorporate all of this type of data. So while they maybe are touting right now it is just a license plate reader, I have read some reports that they are looking to expand upon that to make it a more all-encompassing system. Certainly, we know that the technology would allow for that, even if they're not publicly saying that they're doing that now. So I, I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that technology is concerning, that the constituents of Portsmouth that I have spoken with about this type of technology have grave concerns about, about privacy issues, and I'll also add on that the ACLU very much is opposed to this type of system. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Chief?
Mr. President, members of the council. I just want to stand, the Portsmouth Police Department fully supports this program. Portsmouth Police Department fully supports this program, and to address, I think, your question, I talked about how it would affect the Portsmouth, town of Portsmouth. I would, I would identify it as a force multiplier. So when we have officers, we only have three officers on the road, and we have an incident that happens, so we have someone coming through town. And a lot of calls we deal with in these days are mental health calls or domestic calls, or even drunk drivers, where two, if not all three of our officers are tied up on a call for an extended period of time, I'll, I'll say that. And this is a force multiplier that can be used to assist victims of crime as well as individuals who are going through some type of crisis. And by the crisis I meant, or what I mean by that is individuals who silver alert, so I know the captain talked about individual silver alert. And silver alert, for those who are not familiar with it, is when an elderly individual or someone with Alzheimer's or some sort of diminished capacity might be missing at the time. And I think all of us would love that ability if one of our loved ones were missing, or one of our loved ones were kidnapped. And I'm glad the captain brought up about that. I was a detective commander at the time, a new detective commander, and captain said it very eloquently, we were very lucky. That thirteen-year-old girl with a twenty-seven-year-old male at the time, we were very, very lucky at the time. And this is technology that is no doubt can help victims and help when we have missing seniors. It can help when we have missing juveniles. It can help we have people with diminished capacity. And this is that force multiplier that I talk about, and I understand people's concerns, and I was here a few years ago, and I did a lot of research, and I talked with Flock extensively, and all those concerns came up. And if nothing's changed, I know it was the Amazon Web Services, AWS is what they use for their data storage. And I know the concerns come up, and it's always a question of privacy versus security. But this is something that would definitely help people. I know there's concerns about it, but it's something that, as law enforcement, it is definitely something that'll aid. I'm not gonna go, I could go and talk about it for hours about the success stories and about what we have, but I just want to remind everybody about the, the incident that we had- Um, but I just want to remind everybody about the, the incident that we had, the carjacking that happened in Middletown in Newport. And I'll sit here and tell you as a police chief, there was a time period when, if you're not familiar with it, there was a carjacking with someone, um, at gunpoint. The incident happened in Newport. And then they did a second car at gunpoint in Middletown. That car that was then picked up by one of our officers and a pursuit happened on West Main Road. When the vehicle was then going 100 miles per hour, northbound and the southbound lanes of travel, we deactivated, we ended that pursuit. There was a time being after that, we did not know where that individual was. And that was a huge concern, uh, sitting here saying that, where would this person be? This technology would be that force multiplier that I talked about, that we could actually know where they were. We could know that they went over into Bristol. We could know that they hadn't left town and we could say, they're still in Portsmouth. We better find them where this person is because we want to protect the public. And I know the concerns, but I think, uh, as Representative McGaw said, the council could ask the state police that if they do anything to change that, where if they wanted to do any, I don't even know if the technology exists with facial recognition or anything else like that. But if they change the parameters of what the state police is asking today, then ask and request the state police to come before you again. But these cameras, they take pictures and from my research, it is just a photograph of the license plate as well as the characteristics of the rear of the vehicle. And I'm not going to say that nobody wants their data taken, but when it was spoken about what data would that be, it would be the license plate and the rear of the vehicle. It is not facial recognition, it is not anybody of the occupants inside the vehicle. It is just that. Picture the rear plate and the characteristics of the rear of the vehicle. So I don't want to belabor it, but we fully support this. Um, I, I applaud and thank the state police for including Portsmouth in this to assist our community. And, uh, I fully support it and I recognize the concerns. But I asked the town council to, uh, give it an opportunity, uh, to pass the Flock cameras.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Any questions for the chief? No? Any other comments from anybody in the, in the audience? I don't see anything online. What is the council's pleasure? Don't want everybody jumped at once. We have, we can, why are the captains here? You can ask them more questions. I mean, I, I will state my concerns. Captain, as you, as you brought it forward, you're still working out how the process is going to work. I would feel more comfortable if you were to come back and say, this is exactly how the process is going to work. We're going to keep the, keep the information, as you said, 30 days. How those MOUs work between the town and, and the state police. I would feel more comfortable voting on that as a full package rather than just not necessarily carte blanche, but, you know, carte blanche, put, put a block camera up. I do have concerns about privacy, but as was brought up during our little break there, I'm on camera now, we were on camera when we walked in the door, we're on camera when we go into Clemens, we're on camera when we go into wherever. So privacy is pretty much out the window these days, but if there's a way that we can keep the Portsmouth citizens' information a little more private, then it might be worth saying no. But I would prefer to have a full package once you have all the logistics worked out, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Mr. Gleason?
I would even, I, I agree with your, your comments. I would al- almost want to kick the can down the road to see how it pans out in other communities as well. Seeing you here tonight is probably one of the rare occasions where I see a state police officer on Equinix Island. Although I under, Mr. Hamilton, the council president told me he, you live in his neighborhood. There's two that live in my neighborhood, but they all seem to drive off the island every day. And my initial comment, I think I made it to Mr. Rayner when we met on this, was maybe they could mount it in front of the state police barracks and then have some people actually inhabit that building and do something for us, you know, as a state force. I would rather see one of your gray cars out on Route 24th than a camera, personally. So I'm kind of torn in how I, you know, I, I always want to support our police department in any way I can, but I also have some concerns about, you know, all the fine print and, uh, you know, how this works for others before we jump into it, so. Don't have a question for you, I'm still sitting here going, this the right thing? But thank you for coming and presenting to us.
Mr. McGaw?
And I, I would, um, agree with Mr. President as far as, uh, there are too many unknowns at this particular time. I do think it's, uh, premature, the safeguards aren't fully in placed, in place for this, I think. And I, I would be, um, hesitant to vote in favor of allowing it.
Sure. So I, I think what I'm hearing is if you can, if we could table this till you can bring all the information, the MOUs and how everything is going to work with, in terms of process, um, back once you iron that out in the next two, three, four months.
I will provide you with the policy when it's in place and MOU. And with all due respect, just let it be known that if you don't want the camera in Portsmouth, there's plenty of cities and towns who have their hand out waiting for it. And I, if you go to, go to the city of Providence, reach out to Colonel Perez. Go see what they got going on. Providence of all cities in the state of Rhode Island. Go take a trip.
Understood. Providence has every kind of camera.
They do. And guess what? Crime's down.
No, I appreciate that, but, Mr. Pyari, you have a-
No, no, I was just gonna take a motion to table until information is received by the state police.
That's a motion I would second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Captain, thank you very much.
Good night, Captain. Good night, thank you.
Appreciate, thank you. Next up, we have, uh, new business, which is 2026 legislative priorities, uh, that were developed by staff and a few things that were left over from last year. Uh, the only reason this is on the agenda was to get it in front of our legislators in order for them to be able to do a little research before we have a discussion with them on December 8th. Does anybody have anything else they would like to add or any questions about any of the items that are on the list? If none, I don't think there's any, uh, action that really needs to be taken.
I just have a question.
Sure.
There is anything that we come up with, is it still, we can still send it in or is this the final?
It's not final, but the, the request in the past two meetings was to get it now so that they would have it ahead of time. But if something comes up that you want to add on there?
That's fine, I was just curious.
Just be aware, if you add something, you might not get, there might be more information that the legislators give us in terms of these because they're able to research a little bit between now and then.
That's fine, I probably don't.
Mr. McGaw?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I appreciate the way it was compiled. For our, our information, it was easy to follow, taking the, um, the comments from each of the departments or the, the input from them and combining it in the format that we had was very helpful.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Mr. Gleason?
I would like to just comment as well, um, there's only one duplicate, it was your annual request for the revenue sharing and we'll cross, cross our fingers on that one.
It's gonna be there until I get it.
There you go, I agree. But I did include the, the requests, uh, from last year. Just if, uh, Rep. McGaw could just pass that on because the, the others aren't here. Just an update on where we stand on those, any potential changes that we could make to gain those asks as well.
So a recap of what our i- items were from last year and also, uh-
And the new item.
A caption of next, of for next year's.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions, Collins? I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken. It's, it's just purely informational and if anybody wanted to add anything to it or make any corrections on it. So next up, we have our, uh, correspondence. My motion received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. And our future meetings will be, uh, December 8th, where we'll have said legislative priorities meeting. And then we, we'll be skipping December 22nd, um, for the Christmas holiday. And then we'll have January 12th and 26th. Uh, the 26th will be our initial budget meeting, Mr. Rayner? With the schools?
I don't have any further, yes, usually.
Usually the last meeting and, yeah, okay, great.
Mr. President, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, before we do that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy thank and safe Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, please be safe and we'll see you all back here on December 8th. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Good night, everyone.